Okay, next is public expression and we have Skip Skinner here to present the award.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you and the members of the Board and Mr. Carter. This is a, this happens to coincide with, this month happens to coincide with the 50th anniversary. I'd like Larry Mosley to step to the podium with me. This month happens to coincide as the 50th anniversary month, first time the Leno Wisco Board met as a group to talk about regional strategies for economic development and what have you. And of course, I recognize Mr. Williams there as a former Board member, but for the purpose of this award, I would like to ask Mr. Carter to step to the podium down here with me right now. Mark Carter is also a, is a former Leno Wisco Board member and I have been negligent since his, his absence from the, from the Leno Wisco Board by not giving him proper recognition, which is what we try to do to all Leno Wisco Board members. And I've got, I've got a plaque that I'd like to present to him tonight. Presented to Mark Allen Carter in grateful recognition of his service to the Leno Wisco Board of Directors and for his distinct vision and leadership, his numerous contributions to regional progress, and for his wise counsel there in critical times from that, from 2004 and 2014.
Thank you so much. You were the surprise.
We wanted, I wanted to surprise Mark with this tonight because he's, well deserved recognition and personally for me, it was some challenging times when I first joined the, joined the staff again as the Executive Director and Mark provided some wise counsel and leadership, especially to me, and that's why I wanted to take some time tonight and come down and recognize him and thank him for his, his service to me and to the greater region.
I'd just like to say, this certainly comes as a surprise and I'm very grateful
to you and certainly appreciate you taking the time to do this. It certainly was not necessary. Thank you so much.
And we'll come back and have that discussion about economic development at some other point.
Can I ask Mr. Skinner a question here?
I was gonna ask Mr. Skinner if he was on that first board.
No, not at first. Close. All day long, I've been wearing a Leno Wisco jacket that you gave me 18 years ago and I'm wearing it every year since then. It's my favorite jacket, but it's beginning to wear out. It has changed. I don't want a plaque. I really have a jacket.
We'll see if I can find one in the archives.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Anyone else during public expression?
Good evening. I really have a speech prepared or anything. I did get a call from some of the parent professionals and assistants and sports staff, and they're asking that you look at their salaries and their salary scales. They already have to top out at 14 years and say they still have to work here, here, years after that to be able to retire. So they just asked that while you're doing your budget to look at their salaries and maybe up the scale a little bit.
Anyone else? Okay, next is the reports. Mr. Carter has the next five, so I'll let you do them all.
As most of you probably are aware, the General Assembly has passed the state budget and it was passed with House Bill 1400, which is a compromised version for the 15-16 budget. The budget includes 100, these are a couple of things, I guess, that are important to public education. The budget includes 193 million for teacher, for the teacher retirement fund and hopefully this will allow a decrease in the rate that the employer has to pay or put up for the 15-16 budget, and that should help our local budget. So we're very appreciative for that. In addition, there is 52.8 million for the state share of a 1.5 percent salary increase for funded SOQ instructional and support positions. So those are, I guess, the two of the highlights from the budget that affect public education and both of them are extremely positive. So we're very thankful for that. Of course, we certainly would like to sing the 1.5 percent increase for our instructional and support positions to have been, been more than that, but we're very thankful for that because we certainly went for a period of time where they didn't receive any raise at all. Also, you have Superintendent's Memo 4615, talks about the amendments and of course there's an attachment to those with that. We can provide that for you. Just on the school calendar, as you're all well aware, we missed 18 full days of school and 10 days we've had two air delays. We have a Superintendent's Memo from the State Superintendent reminding us of the requirements for instructional time in the school year and according to the Code of Virginia and the standards of accreditation, we are required to provide instruction for a minimum of 180 days or 990 clock hours. So we do have to provide proof of that. Of course, if we have time built into the schedule, school divisions can use that time that exceeds the 990 clock hours, but we do have to do that. Of course, at this point later in the, on the, excuse me, later on in the agenda, you'll have to take action on that, but I just wanted you to be aware that we have missed 18 full days and had 10 two-air delays. The next item is the 2015 Southwest Region Spring Forum. That'll be held on April the 13th at Carroll County High School, or Carroll County Public Schools and that will be at Carroll County High School. And the registration for that for Board members is March the 23rd. So any Board member that's interested in attending will need to let us know so that we can get you registered prior to that. Each Board member that attends will receive three Academy Points for that, for the BSBA Academy Points. The Advanced Ed has been rescheduled, our external visit, for April the 19th through the 22nd, and you have a copy of that schedule in your packet. So that will be the schedule that we'll follow unless there's any changes. If there is, we'll let you know. Next on the agenda is the 8.8 million grant to end child hunger in Virginia. And Governor McAuliffe and First Lady Dorothy McAuliffe, they announced on March the 2nd that Virginia had been awarded 8.8 million in federal grant for an innovative project that's designed to help end childhood hunger in the Commonwealth. And then yesterday, the Governor and the First Lady along with the Secretary of Agriculture announced the divisions that would be receiving the grant and the school divisions that will receive the grant are Bristol City, Buchanan County, Galak City, Grayson County, Lee County, Richmond City, Scott County, and Smith County. And these were selected based on the percentage of students that were eligible for free and reduced lunch and on state accreditation status. The enrollment report for the month of February stands at 3,122 students. That's down eight students from the previous month and it's down 75 students from this same period last year.
Good evening. This is a summary of our financial activity for the month of February. Our state revenues totaled $2,327,674.77. Federal revenues and reimbursements totaled $8,185.80. And the insurance revenues were $5,053.19. Our total revenues of $2,340,913.76. Our, the percentage of revenues that we have received as of February 28th is 52.8 percent. Our expenditures for the month of February, our general fund payroll and accounts payable totaled $2,508,103.60. Title I payroll and accounts payable totaled $130,714.21. Head start payroll was $87,278.81. And insurance payments totaled $302,758.92. Our expenditures for the month were $3,028,855.54. Through February 28th, we had used 50.71 percent of our appropriations for the year.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Denise, on the insurance fund?
Yes.
On the deposits?
Yes. Because we were out so much in February, I was not able to deposit until 1st of March.
Okay.
March will be.
Notice that that was quite down to what it normally is. I was just curious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, next is the action agenda items. First is the consider approval of the Genius School Board Association policy updates. Ms. Adams?
Good evening. You were provided in your packet the red line documents which indicates the underline was for new and the cross-out was for delete or the strikeout. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'd like to also point out that ICID, which was school year, school day, that mistake in that first paragraph came down from BSBA and it will probably, will probably be seen again as they correct it. So I ask that to consider adoption of these policy updates presented in February.
Any questions?
Most of them are just updated. Text of the policy was reformatted. Nothing new.
Questions concerning?
Make a motion to accept it.
Say, have a motion second on favor side. Pose. Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you.
Okay, next is consider approval of the Put Kids First resolutions. Mr. Carter?
As the Board recalls, last month, Ms. Johnson appeared before the Board and provided the Board with a copy of this resolution and asked that we consider it. And this is a joint venture between the Virginia Education Association and the Virginia Parent Teacher Association because they believe that the Commonwealth has no more precious resource than its children. And they're asking that we join the campaign to mobilize Virginians to, to demand that Virginians, our Virginia's elected state officials place the need of Virginia's children's and public schools first. Therefore, they're organizing and supporting a statewide campaign and a rally on April the 18th at 3:00 PM on the State Capitol in Richmond. And they have a resolution asking the Board to consider that in support of this rally at the State Capitol and Put Kids First.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Next is to consider approval of the revisions to the 2014-2015 school calendar. Snowmake up days. Mr. Carter?
I provided for you in your packet a copy of the 2014-15 school calendar and that's our current calendar, but certainly didn't, this calendar doesn't take into consideration the 18 snow days and the 10 two-air delays that we've had. So in order to meet the state's instructional time requirements, the Board will need to consider revising the school calendar. And you have like eight different scenarios in front of you. Four of those scenarios are based on a regular school day. Four of those scenarios are based on an extended school day. Excuse me, we've figured the extended school day with five minutes added to each period. So that's an additional 35 minutes a day if the Board wanted to consider extending the school day to make up some of those clock hours. At this point, we're probably going to be looking at meeting the 990 clock air requirement rather than the 180 instructional day requirement. It's going to be almost impossible with that many days absent to meet the 180 instructional day. So we're looking at trying to meet the 990 clock air requirement to satisfy the state's instructional airs requirement. But anyway, we have those eight calendars and if you look at the green boxes, that shows you the SOL testing, possible SOL testing windows. The SOL testing window must open on a Monday and must close on a Friday and it must be four weeks in length. The gold box on your schedule shows you the exam days. There's to be four days scheduled for exams and the L and the last box simply stands for the last day of school. I guess let's.
End discussion.
Anyone a motion?
I will take a motion, yes.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept Schedule 2, which keeps us on regular schedule. Still gives us two days off for spring break. SOL window starting on May 11th, ending on June 5th and the last day of school, June 11th.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number two.
And also, that's only 175 days instead of 180. Since we already passed it, anyway.
You're gonna make it, Mr. Carter.
But it does meet the instructional clock.
It meets 990. Okay, next is the consider approval to renew the insurance coverage for the 2015-2016 school year. All policies except health insurance. Ms. Lambert, Mr. Carter?
Yes, as we discussed last month, we were supposed to have an engineer come down from the, from VACO Insurance and give us a list of recommendations for scheduled maintenance upgrade and to help keep our insurance costs low. But due to the weather we've experienced over the last month, he was not able to complete that. So we are awaiting his second visit and his recommendations. And at that point, when he's finished with that, VACO will give us some numbers to work with and look at for budget purposes. And whether we want to renew or put it out for business.
He is scheduled to be here this Thursday. I'm not sure exactly how long it will take him to complete it. I doubt that he can complete what he's planning on doing in one trip. But after Thursday, we should have some idea of how long it will take and how many visits they will possibly make and the recommendations. But VACO was reluctant to give us a figure until after they do this inspection. So we would actually recommend that the Board table this again until next month until we get some figures from VACO.
Do you have any ballpark figures about what kind of damage the last system did to us? Just ballpark?
Dollar-wise, I, no sir, I do not. Actually, it's probably a good thing you didn't come and that'll fix. Actually, we were very fortunate, to be honest with you. I mean, we certainly had some, some issues here and there, but compared to what the damages that a lot of folks suffered, we were very fortunate as a school system.
When, when do the policies expire?
Not until June 30th.
June 30th.
And they realized we were under a crunch for budget purposes. So I feel like they'll expat out it once they have the engineer's recommendations in front of them.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, have a motion to table. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, next is consider approval of carpentry class at Lee County Career and Technical Center for the 2015 and 2016 school year. Mr. Carter?
As the Board recalls, back in November, the Advisory Council met at the Career and Technical Center and of course, they have recommended, and one area they addressed certainly was carpentry, and they've recommended that the Board consider placing a carpentry class back at vocational school in lieu of the building trades class that was there. And of course, we have been unable to find anyone certified for building trades, but we probably can find someone that we can get certified for carpentry easier. And the Advisory Committee, I'll sign the letter and they're recommending and requesting that we consider support and approve and reinstate that carpentry class. We have had carpentry to Career and Technical Center before, but it's been several years ago because it actually kind of all merged into the building trades class. But they're asking that we reconsider reinstating a carpentry class.
Okay, have a motion to approve the carpentry class.
Excuse me, a question. Are you asking for a motion to approve the class or are you asking for a motion to consider approving?
Well, it says approve on here. Consider approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Have a comment?
No, I, I certainly, I think this Board is supportive of vocational school. I think our record speaks for itself. And I'm, I'm all for it for, for any classes over there that our students can use to better themselves for, for life after school. One of the reasons we had issues with this before, other than funding, was the lack of interest. And I, I would like to maybe, if Mr. Carter could maybe get any, any kind of a ballpark figure on how many people would be interested in enrolling in that class where it offered next year. And maybe canvass by phone since, since time is of the essence.
We can do that. We can, we can survey students.
That's just, I mean, I'm all for it. It's no problem.
Or else?
I just wondered about budget. Budget-wise, do you think the budget can handle it?
Well, of course, we haven't started the budget process yet, but I do believe based on preliminary information that we probably can.
I was just wondering if we could make a motion to give Mr. Carter the authority to go ahead and make that decision on his own after he reviews. Stay behind the poll of the Board. Let us vote on that tonight, give him the authority that he thinks is a necessary position and will have a pretty good enrollment to.
I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
I'll put that in motion.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. It's on you, Mr. Carter.
Sounds like it is.
Okay, consider approval of revised school bus driver application. Mr. Carter?
I would like to ask the Board to consider approval of the revised application that you have in your packet. This application includes the driver's license number. It updates the school board's address to the new 911 address. It also updates the background check information as far as the amount that it costs to do a background check and who actually pays for that background check. It actually also updates the nondiscrimination policy at the bottom of the application. So we'd like to ask the Board to consider approval.
Have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, next is consider approval of the overnight field trips. Mr. Carter?
We have two requests for overnight field trips, both from the Lee Career and Technical Center. One is for the FBLA State Competition in Reston, Virginia. The other one is for the National DECA Conference in Orlando, Florida.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So moved. Or second. Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. All right. Next is consider approval of the ERIP plan, the Retirement Incentive Plan 1, table from February the 10th.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Mr. Hobbs, he looked at our ERIP plan that we had approved last year, which was formerly Plan 13. Did we change the plan because it was the only plan that was approved last year? And Mr. Hobbs has made some recommendations as far as the language that's in the policy. And I've asked him if he will address the board with that.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Good evening, Mr. Chadwell, members of the Board. I think you have in your packet a revised ERIP Plan 1 document. It's a two-page document. And largely what we've done of it was we've drawn from former Plan 13, which has been renumbered. I think it was renumbered in last year's.
It was.
Adoption. I've also taken a look at policies, early retirement policies throughout the Commonwealth. And a number of school systems, in fact, have phased out the early retirement plans. And after speaking to, to legal counsel for those boards about their concerns and looking at the plans of others, I've made some, some suggestive changes here. One, and probably the most important, most substantive change, is simply to strengthen the school board's legal position with respect to enforcing the 90-day work rule, but to provide at the same time flexibility for the Board to allow the Superintendent to negotiate with retirees to allow them to work fewer hour, fewer days rather, fewer than the 90 days in exchange for a pro-rata reduction if that's what the employee elects. There have also been some changes simply for clarification. For example, there was a phrase formerly, maximum social security age. We've tweaked that. We've clarified that that means the age at which an employee becomes eligible for unreduced social security benefits. That, of course, changes and I, I think right now that age is 66, perhaps 67, depending on the, the date in which someone, sorry, the year in which someone was born. But that's just, just to clarify things and remove any potential vague language in the agreement. There were also a couple of issues. One, the, the most major issue that, that some boards had confronted and at least one board, I believe, had eliminated their plan based upon this. I don't think it's, I don't think it's as severe a concern as, as that school division believed, but there have been school systems in the state that have faced lawsuits over age discrimination claims stemming from having to pick and choose which employees could participate. And so the prior plan has had language in it which would have allowed the school board to pick and choose. I think it's a safer option to simply allow the Board if there are, if there is excess, if the interest in the plan is beyond the funds that are allocated for the plan, the Board simply has the option to not adopt the plan or not implement the plan for that year rather than getting a position where the Board has to pick and choose and potentially face a claim as other school systems have. Glad to answer any questions about the plan.
Anyone have a question?
One, one other clarification of the, the amount of the local health supplement. I have inserted language, simply reciting that that is, shall be equivalent to the percentage of health insurance costs that the school board pays for its full-time employees during a given contractual year. So it's not a set dollar amount. It obviously fluctuates with the cost of health insurance.
If you don't have a question, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Have a motion to approve ERIP Plan Number 1?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
Thank you.
Okay, next is to consider approval of payment of bills. Mr. Carter?
I recommend that the Board approve payment of bills.
Have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
And next is, of course, some recommendations of the Board. Mr. Williams?
Back from Craig Black Kennedy back there. And I'd like to tell you that I've been all for what she said right there for years. I'm sure we'd like to see Drummond put back into schools. I like it anyway. Think you'd be running over in classes with it. And I want to tell you, Kennedy, that we, the way that Lee Players is putting on, I voted for it because I had the part picked out for you in the thing there.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
You and your mom voted. But we appreciate what you've done and I want to tell you, she, all she's doing is acting around a little bit there to get this award. I'd also like to thank her for coming over with Leno Wisco. I'd also like to thank for coming over with Lena Wisco, and also like to thank those people who put input into the budget and also into the meeting here tonight and all these things. It's tough to look at this thing and see how many days we've got to make up, and I don't think anybody is one hundred percent happy with what we had to vote on, but I certainly am not there, but I did vote on it there, but we'll get through the year somehow or other. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, Mr. Carter. Mr. Wigg?
Yeah, I just also like to congratulate, I think it's Kennedy.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, wish you the best, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Of course, you know, I'm an avid supporter of the fine arts, I guess you could say that. And I don't see any reason in the world why they couldn't have Drum at your school. Just go talk to your principal and get enough interest, and hopefully a teacher will have a free period that they'd be able to do that and work that out. I think that would be a good idea, I mean, as an elective, so maybe you can initiate that. But I think that would be, I, I just think the, the more fine arts you have, I think the more well-rounded the students are, and, and studies have proven that students involved in fine arts do a lot better retention stuff. But congratulations to you. Also, I was, wanted to mention, you know, I'm very happy about the state wanting teachers to have that one point five percent raise, and I think that's wonderful, I just wish they wouldn't give us a percentage all the time. Because I, like I said before, when you do those percentages, it just widens the gaps from the rolling salary scale at the top, and I'm, I'm hoping there's some flexibility in there that we can work in, within the numbers if the state's going to go along with that and see what we can do. And also, Mr. Carter, I'm just wondering, are we in panic mode yet because of our attendance?
No, not really.
I mean, our attendance are enrollment, I'm sorry.
No, no, we're not in panic.
Still pretty good shape.
We, we think we'll.
Then I feel much better.
I'll ask Ms. Lambert for her.
And I'll yield to Ms. Jesse.
Chair will have to yield. I'll join Mr. Williams and Mr. Twig about congratulating you, Kennedy. Wish, wish you well, that I would, I better not say that too loudly, that you're a sure shot making the governor's school, but given your performance so far, I think you, you'll probably do well. Ms. Adams, how many spellers will be going to Knottsville on Saturday, do you know?
One or two, but I don't know.
Just, just one? Well, and I wish him well also in that feat, hope he comes back in winter. And for all those that made the comment that they would like one good snow, next time, I hope maybe you put a little parameters on that about the amount and/or the days missed. And I will admit, I was one of those, yes, I'll smack myself.
It was Elsa.
And somebody else will. I'll, I'll move over soon.
I said it was Elsa.
Oh, Elsa, oh, okay.
You had people praying for snow dance, doing snow dance, and then there's praying for it to stop. I also would like to commend you, Ms. Ray, and tell your mom I'm mad because she didn't come to the house.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations. Okay, next is Mr. Harbor, who's going to, in his executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move, we go to Executive Close Session to Consider Personnel Section 2.2 Dice 3711 A1 and Pending Litigation Section 2.2 Dice 3711 A7 of the Code of Virginia to discuss personnel pending litigation.
You have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, on favor say aye.
Aye.